Item 14 dash 209 is a request to approve an offer of a five-year contract with a five-year mutual option to the LST Ship Memorial Foundation to relocate the LST 325 to Peoria's riverfront, and there is a handout on your desk on White.
Mr. Setti, did you want to maybe start this conversation with a kind of a summarization of a lot of information that you've given to council over the last number of weeks, probably into months now, and maybe frame up, you know, kind of focusing on what we need to get done tonight?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and council. At the meeting on May 27th, you asked staff to do a few things. One was to gather some public input and interest on this particular issue, as well as answer a few questions that you had provided. Since that meeting, we've conducted a number of public input activities. We launched an online web, an online survey. We had 300, as of today, 313 responses to that survey. We created a Facebook page mainly to share information with people about the project and get them to understand a little bit better. We discussed the issue at the June 17 Downtown Advisory Commission meeting, and then also we held a public meeting on June 17 at the Gateway Building. Through these efforts, it seems clear that a majority of the people who at least have chosen to respond to our inquiries support bringing the LST 325 to Peoria. We, just as one, you know, measurement of that, 62 percent of those responding to the survey expressed support for the project. While there seems to be a good debate about the location, and if you remember, we proposed two locations, one essentially in front of the River Station, one just north or upstream of the I-74 Bridge. There seems to be a debate as to what's the best location. It seems, looking at the surveys and other comments we've received, that there's a stronger preference for the area in Festival Park, which would be just north of the I-74 Bridge. I would suggest that this, if we are going to proceed with an offer at this point, that this would be the location that we made as part of our offer, rather than the original proposal of the River Station location, just based on the level of support we seem to be getting for that location. We believe the cost differential, I outlined that to you in an email later today, probably about $130,000 difference in cost to do it there, to the, cost more to do it there. In addition to more public engagement, I provided you with some information that you had requested on costs, comparable ship museums, and some economic impact. I think the four, last four weeks have actually been very productive. I have been in contact with the LST Ship Memorial Foundation Board, the board president, let him know about our progress, shared with him some of the reports that I shared with you. Their president has indicated that they would like to make a decision in July. Previously, they've never really given us a deadline. We knew that their deadline to give to the city of Evansville was October 1, but their board has said to him that they would like to make a decision in July. So I feel it's appropriate that if possible, that we make a decision tonight, so that we're giving them the proper time to ask any more questions of us and be able to make their decision. The biggest issue that's out there seems to be the cost. We have estimated this at about 1.5 million, the, if we're going with the alternate location, we'll call it 1.6 million as a capital outlay. And that is not to be taken lightly, the cost. While we are, we would be hopeful that many of the, much of this cost would be covered by external funds, either through public facility sales tax, or a state tourism grant, or corporate donations, or individual donations, none of that is guaranteed. At this point, I gave some information about how that state tourism grant works, we can't apply for it until we actually have a project. So it's obvious that cost would seem to be sort of the biggest issue here. So I would, tonight, I believe, and staff believes, that you basically have three options for you to consider tonight. One would be to simply not make an offer. That wouldn't mean that the project wasn't good, and that we wouldn't wish that the LST were here, but we simply weren't in a financial position to make that offer at this moment, and that would be one option that's left to you. A second option would be to make an offer, and do so at the full risk of covering all costs, so the 1.6 million or so, we would probably get, try to work, that is an engineer's estimate, and kind of a broad estimate based on current concepts. But the city council would make a full offer to the LST Board, and say, "We will cover all the costs, and we'll find a way of doing it." A third option, and I've discussed this with a few of you, is to simply make an offer that might be contingent upon some level of external funding. So just as an example only, if the city council felt, and this would also be because we felt it was a worthy project, but not sure we could afford all of it, if the city council were to say, "We can commit $500,000," as an example, to this project, and then charge staff with going out and making an offer like that to the LST Board, and that they would have to understand that if we did not receive the external funding, that our offer, I guess, would be moot offer, or would somehow dematerialize, I'm looking for the right way of explaining that. But, so the offer would somewhat be contingent upon other external funding. That can give you a level of comfort that the city is only exposed to a certain amount, of an amount we think you can afford, but also gives them some comfort that we're going to be trying very hard. I would remind you that any of these are merely offers we are making to them, they are not, they have the right to turn us down. They have been, you know, we, much has been made about their location in Evansville, and the, you know, some of the difficulties they've had with connectivity to their downtown. I know Councilwoman Akerson was down in Evansville and saw this firsthand, as did Mr. Vlahos over here. But Evansville's been very aggressive in their pitch to keep the LST 325, wants to keep them very much, has made them some good concessions about location if some things change. So we still do have some very stiff competition. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have about the materials I've provided, or the offer going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Setti, and again, for a number of weeks and then months now, the research that you have done and information you've provided has been exemplary, and I, we appreciate the diligence that you've put into this, Councilman Spain, and then Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I echo those sentiments. Mr. City Manager, I know you've worked very hard on this issue for, might be an entire year or so when we first learned of this opportunity, so I thank you, and thanks for your diligence in continuing to add additional research, details, and investigation that I think has helped us think about this issue in a more robust way. So if we have three or so options, and I suppose eleven of us could dream up other options, but if we have the three options of maybe a polite no, that timing isn't right, or not a good fit for us, offer the full option of the entire outlay, and then there seems to be the compromise option, and certainly, as you pointed out, we don't know whether or not that option would be accepted. But of a hypothetical amount here, if we're, you threw out the number 500,000, which, let's use that for example, for now. So really, there's a remaining cost of 1.1 million dollars that we would need to seek if we were successful in being awarded the relationship with the LST, correct?
Yes.
And the I-Bot grant, we anticipate, might be in the range of 500 to 750,000?
Technically, it would be up to 50 percent of the total infrastructure cost, so if that cost is 1.6 million, technically it could be 800,000. Now whether we would be successful in getting an $800,000 grant may, you know, might be a stretch, and, but it's still, so yes, I think 400 to 500,000 is doable. This is, this is a different kind of, in speaking with the project manager for the Bureau of Tourism, this is a different kind of project than they normally fund. Here, the Bureau of Tourism really gets to compete against another state, which is something that they're not generally doing. So I think they'd be willing to look at this a little bit differently, but I'm not sure they'd be able to, I wouldn't want to rely on an $800,000 grant at this point after having that conversation with them.
Sure. And other ideas that we have could be assistance from the county through the public facilities, sales tax, the additional quarter percent from 2009, correct?
That, we've had some early conversations with county staff about that.
Or reaching out perhaps to the private sector to help.
Right. There may be other foundations, there may be federal grant opportunities, or other sorts of resources that are out there, we just haven't explored yet. But yes, corporate donations, or individual donations could be there as well.
And in terms of how we would package our response back to the LST Board, if we were to pursue, if the council were supportive of what I call the compromise option tonight, that I do think gives us a little more protection on our end, from a financial perspective, what do we, what do you need to hear from us tonight to help you craft the proposal that would go back to the Board?
I think I would need for you to tell me which of the two locations, for sure, and if it's the Festival Park location, or the River Station location, just so that I would know what I was offering them, for sure. And then some dollar amount that you felt comfortable allocating from city resources, and when we, there's a variety of sources, from tax increment financing, you know, to general funds, capital dollars, or tourism reserve funds, potentially. So some amount, so that I would know what the balance was, so that I would be giving them a realistic view of how we would be going forward, because they deserve that. They deserve to have a realistic look at what our offer is compared to what they have in Evansville.
Mr. Chairman, I think what it may be helpful for us to have is perhaps a motion to consider and aid us in our deliberations as we move forward, and so I'm going to try to do that based on the items just mentioned by the city managers. So I do think that this is a project that could be a nice addition to our riverfront. I think it's very, it's a tremendous tribute to the veterans in our community. I think, I think it would create some positive opportunities for us, but I also think we need to be careful. We've all received the economic impact, that certainly is something that our estimates at this point, but something that we need to consider. So a compromise option that gives us the chance to limit the use of city dollars here, I think, is appropriate. And I would say we need to be careful about the funds we use, and I'd be supportive of TIF funds for, that are confined to this geographic area, and/or probably a combination of opportunity within the Tourism Reserve Fund. So no dollars that we'd put on the table would be otherwise available for important city services that I think we're all aware of, and constantly looking for additional dollars. So, Mr. Chairman, let me make a motion that we direct staff to proceed with an offer to the LST Board for a location on our riverfront in the Festival Park area, where we seem to have some more support, for an amount not to exceed $500,000 from the city of Peoria, with our pledge and effort to work to assemble the remaining amount of financing. And you know what, if we're not able to do it, as the assistant manager said, obviously they have a right to change their mind and go a different direction. So I'll introduce that as a motion.
Seconded by Councilwoman Jensen, and then I had Councilwoman Jensen, and then Councilman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. First, I guess, Mr. Setti, I can barely see you over there.
We're both, we're both.
I just wanted to commend you for all your hard work in this, as well. I attended the public meeting at the River Station, and you've just done, I'm sorry, at the River, no, at the Gateway Building, but you've done a tremendous job, and I know the whole council appreciates your work, as well as the people on the riverfront and the city as a whole. So thank you. I also want to thank you for kind of modifying your recommendation tonight. I think that the location over by the River Plex at Festival Park is a much better location. I think, as I've stated before, as a former resident of 401, or tenant of 401 Water Street, I walked along that park, that parkway quite frequently, and I would not like to have a big wall of gray there with the ship right there. I also frequently go to the Riverfront Market, and I think having the ship in that location would be a real negative. So I support the location over at Festival Park, I think it's a better location. And I also want to commend you for offering this idea of a compromise. I think it's a good idea to have our offer contingent upon external funding. I was planning tonight, because I have had real reservations about the financial viability, and so I was real concerned, and really was considering voting against it, but I can support, and do support, offering the LST a contingent offer based on external funding. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the first thing I wanted to do is thank Councilman Spain for his leadership on this ever, this endeavor, and I wanted to thank Mr. Setti for all the things that he has done relative to this, to getting us where we are, because I didn't know what kind of option we needed. But this item, I talked to the veterans at my American Legion, was vitally important to them. You know, it's, there are those things that, you know, in a community that really make a difference, and this makes a difference to that greatest generation that served, that are dying at the rate of a thousand a day. You know, this is one of those few remaining artifacts of World War II, and with all that we are doing on our riverfront, and in the Warehouse District, I think, as you said, would be a great asset to our city, to our community, and to our riverfront. You know, it's a true remembrance of that greatest generation of World War II veterans. Also going to be a reminder of those who served at that time, and our community's support for those veterans. As well as, as was mentioned by Councilman Spain, it's going to attract visitors and conventions hopefully to our community, and to our city, and to our changing riverfront. So I thank you on behalf of the veterans, and on behalf of the people at the American Legion Post 2, for coming up with some type of creativity to keep us on point in moving us forward for this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too looked at this for quite a long time, and even before arriving on the council, I could appreciate Mr. Setti's work. He and I became very closely acquainted as we were moving through a couple of years of TIF conversations for the South Town. I spoke with my, I have, my father was in the military, as well as my brother, and unfortunately, my father is deceased, but he was a missionary who, after his military days, served the underserved. My brother, who is, who has no other choice but to help my mom at the food bank at the church, and I had a conversation about these kinds of issues. And many of my uncles also served in the military. The conversation with my brother surrounded what would be best for an area of the city that I represent. The area of the city that I represent would love to have the LST in the alternate location. We support all of our military families that are in their district and in our city, and nationally. However, my support comes without any city funding, and would strictly look for outside funding. And the reason that is, as we discussed earlier, the entirety of the 1st District is in a food desert, not just the south side, but the first, but the North Valley, where typically, where this ship would be butting up against the North Valley. We've got issues related to relocation of low-income housing before us. Many people talk about what Cabrina Green did, but without talking about the $100 million that Chicago threw at Cabrina Green. In my district, in one part of my district, there is 43 percent unemployment, 43 percent unemployment. And those are just the big hitters. I won't go through crime, and code enforcement, and substandard housing, and lack of retail in our, in some of my areas, Madison Theater, the whole lot, CSO. And so I strongly support bringing the LST here with an alternate option that you provided, thank you for those, but I would not like to see any funds from the city go toward that, rather, I think, based upon the strong support that Councilwoman Turner indicated, that there would be outside individuals, organizations that would step up to support bringing them here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Akerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for Assistant City Manager Setti, and I will echo what everyone has said. Obviously, you've worked very long and hard on this, and I was amazed at how late you were up last night, and even today, when you were supposed to have a little bit of respite, you were still working away. So thank you for doing that. As you mentioned, I did drive to Evansville to take a look at this ship. I have a tendency to call it a boat, I recognize it's not a boat. And now this is a twist, to locate the boat in another location, I was not in favor of the recommended, or the requested, location, which is adjacent to the downtown. And as I look at the pictures of the ship, would the numbers that you've presented to us replicate what is currently there now in Evansville?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, the infrastructure work. So in other words, the way that the boat is situated currently in Evansville, it's offshore by quite a distance, the coast is tethered to the boat somewhat by a ramp, and there is a large patio facility that they use for outdoor parties, and a variety of other events, outdoor dining. There is a small building that is also on a floating mechanism, which I think you described in this.
I think I, I.
So do you get what I'm saying?
Right. No, I understand your question now. No, it, right, in Evansville, the LST ship is pushed very far out into the river, for whatever reasons, and I'm not sure what the reasons for that particular arrangement are, but what we would be suggesting, and I'm not sure I've brought it tonight, but previously I've sent you some renderings of how it would look in this alternate location, and it would essentially be up against the shore. And so we would, the docking system would be, you know, right up against the seawall that's there, just upstream of the bridge, and the ship would just be up against, essentially up against the seawall. There would obviously be a docking mechanism that's between them, but it would be very close to the, you know, to the seawall there, and not pushed out into the river as it is in Evansville.
So then what would happen with flooding?
The, one of the reasons.
Or any sort of, you know, adjustment?
Sure. No, right.
Elevation change in the river, which is common?
Right. The mechanism as designed would float with the river, so that it is designed to keep the ship securely moored to the system, to the, you know, to shore, essentially, in all sorts of, in all sorts of river conditions. So it essentially, the, where the fenders meet the ship, that mechanism goes up and down on pylons that are drilled, are drilled into the bedrock, so that it stays put.
Do you mind if I keep asking some questions? Okay. So then what happens to the building that would house the gift shop, the ticket booth, their offices?
Right.
Where would that be built?
So, the way, because that whole area is in a floodplain, we couldn't, without building it on stilts or something, we couldn't essentially build something in Festival Park. And so the solution we came up with is, if you were to go down to what the, where the spirit of Peoria is, they have built a building on a, essentially on a barge. They've built a building on top of a dock, and so that is the email I tried to pound out with my thumbs on my phone during my respite this afternoon, of, that we would essentially build a building on a barge, that, and barges, people think of barge in a different way, on a floating, on a floating dock, that would become then part of the overall dock, so it would become kind of a controlled access point, just where the seawall ends along there, and you kind of go back down into the shore, that's where it would be placed, and it too would float with, you know, with the, just as the River Station, I'm sorry, just as the Spirit of Peoria's kiosk does now.
Okay. So that is similar to what they have, although, you know, the boat is a distance from the shore, and, okay, so, all right, well, you know, that adds a different twist to this. I'm not, I'm not in favor, I agree with Councilwoman Moore, I think that the financing needs to come from private sources, not from our public sources. I mean, I was thinking, if we were going to be willing to explore some other entertainment type experiences for our citizens, and we were committed to a million and a half dollars, I mean, I think that we could ask the citizens, "What would you like to see at the riverfront?" I mean, I can imagine, in the wintertime, an ice rink in the same location that the farmer's market is, and use the River Station that's not being used now to, you know, be the place where the skating rental takes place, and using the River Station restaurant as, you know, a restaurant, similar to what they have in Millennial Park. I'm sorry that we keep bringing up Chicago as a point of reference for other options that we could explore, but at the end of the day, we have so many infrastructure needs, and there are so many areas of our city, that people just are shaking their heads and wondering, why is the city council not understanding and recognizing there are so many needs for things that we've built 20 years ago? So I like the way that this is moving, so that it's an alternate location, and with funds coming from someplace other than the taxpayer dollars.
Councilwoman Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's the depth of the water in that area, and what's the lowest the depth gets, and is that ever going to be a problem for the amount of water that's needed for this to float?
I don't know the answers to any of those questions, but that's why we hired Midwest Foundation, and I assume that they kind of looked at that. That's where the ship has, when it has been here on its two previous visits, has been, so I assume it's not a problem. But the water at Pool in the, is at 12 feet. Where it is at that exact moment, or at that location, I'm not sure, but I've been assured by the professionals at Midwest Foundation that that particular location will work.
Okay, great. So you have that assurance that we wanted that problem in a dry summer?
Right.
Okay. And I didn't quite understand Councilwoman Moore's position, because it's her district, I want to make sure I understand her, that you said that you support this idea, but do not support any funding? Did you meant zero funding, or the $500,000 motion that's on the floor?
Zero city funding, because one of the, one of the things that was mentioned was TIF funds. And TIF funds are, I'm looking at economic development in the district, and to take, if there was TIF funds available to that degree, I don't think there is, and where that LST would be, and put it in the, put it in the river, instead of putting it on the streets, I have a very difficult time reconciling that with what I see going on in the North Valley.
Thank you. Thanks for your opinion on that.
Further questions, comments? Councilman Grab?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Could you repeat the motion?
The motion is to direct staff to proceed with an offer to the LST Board to locate the ship in the Festival Park area, not to, in an amount not to exceed $500,000, with the city's pledge to assemble the remaining financing.
One of my concerns about the motion, which I believe is an attempt to secure the needed votes tonight, is the manner in which this is received by the people in Evansville, It would seem to me that there are so many question marks. This could very well cement the vote to Evansville, Indiana, for another however many years they agree to. So what this motion may in essence be is a no vote, even though it looks like we're keeping the door open. But if I were in Evansville, Indiana, and I were the LST people, and I saw this half measure coming forward, it would probably I saw this half measure coming forward, it would probably not encourage me to consider moving the boat from the Ohio River to the Illinois River. I believe this offer will be dead on arrival. And that being the case, and I could be wrong, and I hope I'm wrong, that means, in essence, we have let this opportunity slip through our fingers. Now, I am of two minds on this as well. I could list so many things that are bedeviling our community today, all the financial challenges that we have and everything else. But I will also say this, still believe Peoria is, we're not quite there yet, in terms of reaching our ability to draw tourists to this city. Said it before, and I'll say it again tonight, I believe this could be a very important trifecta in our downtown, in the first district. I believe it could very well cause people to come to Peoria and consider staying all night. They could do many things. Of course, they would first come to West Main Street. And then, of course, they could go to the Riverfront Educational and Entertainment Center. I don't call it a museum. I have a problem with that term. It sounds very stuffy and standoffish. They could do the Caterpillar Visitors Center. They could do a lot of wonderful things here in Peoria. We have the history here in Peoria, if we would market it better. If Peoria is nothing else, it is a great historic settlement of the city. I don't know how many times I have said this in 13 years. We have the French-Indian connection. We have it all here. This morning, I had breakfast with a veteran. You would all probably know who he is. And he had concern about the number of veterans of World War II who are dying off. Let me tell you something, ladies and gentlemen. The people of this country, the people of this city, will never forget what these people have done for this country. Who would have thought one of our best-selling movies would have been Lincoln? That seems so distant in the past. Look at the educational opportunity for our schoolchildren. We've got a Fortune 25 company in town. They have contacts. They have a commitment to this community. I think they will help us creatively, if we continue to ask them for some thoughts on this. But I think we need to make a commitment. If we don't want it, just vote it down. A half measure's not going to cut it. And I read with great interest, I might add, I don't normally comment on articles I read in the newspaper, but I'm going to do it tonight. I read the news report from our journalist who went to the Ohio River area to investigate this as a possibility, and to interview the local townspeople. I couldn't help be struck by what this could mean for our community. Remember, the boat in Evansville, Indiana is in a very inconvenient place. We are putting it in a trifecta configuration if we bring this here. The success can be far greater than anything that's happened in Evansville, Indiana, if we're willing to believe that we can do it as a community. I think we should move forward with confidence. I believe we can generate some additional funds to do this. I believe in the final analysis, and maybe I'm naive on this. My economic model tells us we will more than get back the money that we expend. I'd rather see us do a 10-year commitment instead of five. I believe we will get the money back, many times over. That's how confident I am of a trifecta downtown. Yes, I'm not saying that we should reject the proposal, but I think we need to seriously consider the ramifications of the proposal as it is currently brought forth. I think it is half-hearted, and I think it will not be well-received. I think it will, in essence, consign us not bringing the boat here. So, I would ask all of you to think about it before you vote, because it's very important. This could slip through our hands. And I know there are going to be constituents who are going to say, oh, that's crazy. Who's going to pay for it? How's it going to happen? Blah, 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 blah. They're doubters. They're skeptics. I'm not. Does my crystal ball always work properly? No, it doesn't, Mayor. Occasionally, you know, it doesn't work. Everything's a risk. But I believe in Peoria. I believe in Peoria being a great historic settlement of the city. And I've been working very hard, and all of you have been, to help market Peoria, and to give it that little extra oomph. I believe this is the extra shot that we need in the arm. So, think carefully before you vote tonight.
Okay. Further discussion on this item? Councilwoman Aikerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that was fabulous appeal and a persuasive argument, and nobody, I'm sure everyone is, agrees that it could be a trifecta, but probably not in a location that everyone seems to be leaning towards, I don't think. I know that when I was there, I had time to speak to Mr. Donahue, and clearly, they want to see an offer positioning the boat adjacent to the museum. So, if you're concerned about writing an offer that will knock it out of the park, and I think it's got to be in that location, which, from my perspective, I cannot support that. But I think that if that is your mission, I think you need, I do not believe we will be competitive if we push the ship, I almost said it again, down the river. And then, in addition to that, you know, they make the most of their money when they're on tour. You know, they are taking the boat this year to Chattanooga, and they're also taking it to, I think, Decatur, Georgia is the other location. And they rely on those excursions to generate the revenue that they need to keep the boat, the ship afloat. And I wonder, too, about the maintenance expenses that we will experience, that we need to take care of on the riverfront. You know, our riverfront, when we had this initial conversation, I went down there, and I was very disappointed with the condition of the riverfront, and I think I mentioned it the night that we talked about this. You know, we, it needs paint, it needs weed pulling, it needs landscaping. There is no money. We do not do a good job of funding that particular budget line item. It's an afterthought and a second thought, and that is because this council has made that kind of decision during budget time. And so, we keep thinking of these, I call them the Detroit Solutions. These projects that you think of are going to create this attraction, and at the end of the day, what people really care about is how great their neighborhoods are. They want to live in a really great city, and once we create a really great city for people to live in, we'll start attracting visitors. Heck, we'll start attracting people who want to live here. And it's going to require a commitment to maintenance, a commitment to planting trees, a commitment, and I don't want to get on my soapbox about this, but it's, again, it's that pushing the maintenance decisions down the road. And we've just listened to the police department talk about homes in the city where maintenance has never even been considered, and now we have blight, you know, and I'm not saying that this boat would get to that condition, because obviously, the people who care about this boat, and it has a lot of historical significance for Evansville. They built those boats there. They are very proud of that ship, and it was fun. It was a fun tour, and I loved the way Mr. Donahue did it. I mean, I was blown away by the experience. But I just don't think that, if you really are concerned about being competitive, I think we've got to agree to fund it without any contingencies, just like baking a real estate offer, and you've got to put it in the right location. So, I don't think it's necessarily, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but for those of you that really want to see that come to fruition, I would make that recommendation.
Okay. Councilman Regenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Grab, I just want to thank you for your eloquence in painting and helping us believe in what we are as a city. My dad was part of that greatest generation, and of his six brothers, four of them were in World War II at the same time. And you can say that generation's dwindling, that there's not as many of them, clearly, but I think that's all the more reason why this is so critical, that my daughters and my sons know about grandpa and what he did. I still get chills when I listen to the Ronald Reagan address at Normandy back in 1984, and to think that's already 30 years ago just blows me away. So, the history and the importance of this, I think, cannot be overstated. I personally thought the river station site was, would create a buzz and an energy, but as I was at the public hearing at the Gateway Building and listened to my colleagues, I can see some real synergy with the Veterans Memorial there on the riverfront also, and making that our tribute to the men and women who have fought for our country through the years. So, I think it behooves us, Councilwoman Aikerson made some good points about the funding and how it's going to be received in Evansville. I think it behooves us that we get this additional dollars in place before the vote, before July. So, that means we have 30 days, or however many days, to start pounding the pavement and making the community aware of this tremendous opportunity that we have to preserve an integral part, part of our history. So, and Councilwoman Spain referred to some of the pools of funds that are set aside for things like this, so that we're not taking this out of operating dollars that would be used for infrastructure, something, the Tourism Reserve Fund clearly is something. And again, reaching out to our friends at the county, this is going to help with their promotion of the museum as well. So, I can see some real synergy there that perhaps we need to explore to the nth degree here in a short time. So, I'll be supporting it and encourage my colleagues to as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last thing I'll say about the LST, there have been words that have been used that, such as risk, and visitors to our city, and investment in people, and history, and importance. When you make your vote, and as I said, I support this LST as a concept, but not if any city funds are expended to bring it here, because the investment that we would make in our folks here in our city would reap us benefits for years to come. Yes, we want to have visitors come to our city, but what have I heard from many of you around the horseshoe and others who have come to our city, they've talked about being afraid to be downtown. They've talked about the rundown nature and look of parts, areas of our city. They've talked about the crime as a result of, in my opinion, of the unemployment. So, that is a better investment, I think, for our future, not just our history, to make this town attractive, that people will feel like they can come here and be safe, that they can come here and see a clean, well-managed city. The purpose, in my opinion, of the creation of the Downtown Development Corporation was to try to assist with these types of things. And if we feel that investing $500,000 from city coffers is better served, bringing in the LST versus investing in training to put more people to work in our city, then we've come to a place that is unfortunate to be. If we are not making the investment in our folks, that their children can see that they, their parents go to a job, and are gainfully employed, and they don't have to sling rock on a corner to bring home bread to the household, then we are creating what we say we despise. We are creating a group of individuals who are taking their cue from what they're seeing in the city. Our city fathers are more concerned about what's happening outside the city and bringing in visitors than they are about what's happening in the city. And that's not a good look for us. And so, I would, I plan to vote no on this issue. If it is tied to city funding, I will vote no. If it is simply tied to looking for funds outside of the city coffers, I'm all for that. I think it would be a good addition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else on this issue? Councilman Grab?
I always agree with my first district council colleague, but is it not possible, with additional tourism, we do create more jobs for the people in all the districts? I don't see one, I don't see one pushing out the other. I think it's a lost opportunity. I really do, if we do not seize this moment. In the second district, we have many historic districts. My constituents believe in preserving and honoring history. Some of them may disagree with my stance on this for the same reasons you outlined, but some of them may also see that this is a continuation, a progression of what they've been trying to do, which is sensitize all of Peoria to the fact that history equals dollars for this community. People come and they go up and down the historic districts in our city. They have trolley tours. You're building out the warehouse district. You want more vitality and people downtown, going to the sidewalk cafes and everything else. Again, I believe it's a trifecta. I believe it creates jobs. I believe, I believe it lifts all boats. I believe we honor our veterans. I believe we teach our schoolchildren. I believe we have more confidence in this community. And when people come to visit us, what do we do? We take them to all these places because we're proud of our city. We want to take them to the Caterpillar Visitors Center, to see that huge end loader, or whatever it is, Councilman Turner. We want them to go to the museum and maybe see Lincoln on the big screen. Now, we can show them a slice of history, the LST. We can take them up onto West Main Street and see the new entrepreneurial vitality and the creative class. We can take them along Grandview Drive, the world's most beautiful drive, nicknamed that by Teddy Roosevelt. We can take them, show them the Peoria Lake, and talk about the French-Indian connection that goes back, which we've yet to really market. I think it works. I say we make a commitment tonight. We don't come forward with a half-hearted measure that's going to doom this, and we make a commitment, and we move forward to ask our county brothers and sisters if they'll assist, to ask Caterpillar what ideas they might have. But we make a commitment tonight, and not dodge it. We say yes or no. Say no? You say no, but I think you'll regret it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that a substitute motion, or is that just a statement?
Well, I'd like to convince everybody without having to do a substitute motion, but I would make a substitute motion that we go forward and expend the dollars necessary to bring this to Peoria with a great deal of confidence, and show that we are a credible player. Now, there's no guarantee. If we do that, let's make certain we understand this. There's no guarantee that they will decide that they're going to move that boat out of the Ohio River into the Illinois River. There's many, many things that can happen, but for sure, it's not going to happen, probably, with this measure, which I think was a measure designed to keep it alive. As I, you know, I welcome the fact that it was brought forward, Councilman Spain. I know you want to keep this alive, but I just feel it would have the opposite effect. I'm quite sure it would. So, yeah, I'd make the substitute motion. So, yeah, I'd make the substitute motion, and I hope it passes.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilman Turner. Discussion on the substitute motion.
What, I don't understand the motion.
It's the full, it's the full offer, 1.5, or 1.6.
$1.6 million, all funded by the city?
I think that what it would be, would be that we would be at risk of paying the full freight. That wouldn't stop us from going out and seeking donations, but that we would be making the argument, or the offer, "Come to Peoria, we'll figure it out."
And Councilman?
We have a time-sensitive, this is a time, there's no guarantee, to make a credible offer. That doesn't mean we don't go back and see, you know, I just talked to some of my county board friends. Most of the people on the county board live in the city of Peoria. They have an interest in this, too. Let's see what we can do to get it here, and at the same time, tap these corporate sources and our county brothers. They've been interested in helping build monuments, but even if they don't come through, it's worth it for the city of Peoria.
Councilman, does your motion include the same location as Councilman Spain's previous?
I think it works at any of the locations. I don't want to get hung up on that. You know, we know for sure that it's in a darn side better location, as the reporter from the Journal Star can tell you, and as Beth Akerson would tell you, in Peoria at any of our sites. I'm not hung up on location at all. I don't want to get into that argument, because that's just a morass. We can work that out later on.
And maybe my question to Mr. Sette would be, and even maybe to Councilwoman Akerson, since she's been down there, in your opinion, does the offer need to be site-specific on one of those two locations, or do you think that they will be?
I think it's important that we're clear to them what we're offering them. So I would suggest that we pick a location. I would suggest that while the river station location is probably, in their eyes, would be the better location because of some of the reasons that were mentioned, I'm not sure that the, we'll call it the Festival Park location, is off the table for them. It provides them, to be honest, some operational efficiencies that they wouldn't have at the river station when it comes to access control to the ship, and that's one of the concerns they've had with the location at the river station, where there's some separation between ticket sales and the actual, the ship entrance. So there are some advantages to that location. It is not a block and a half away from the museums, but it's still within three or four blocks of the museums. It still has very good visibility from I-74, from other places. So it may not be the perfect location, but it very well may, and I'm not suggesting that we'd be offering them just a second-class location. I think it would be a very good location for them, and so I wouldn't worry that that would be frowned upon by them necessarily.
Okay. So, Councilman, I think if you want to leave the motion as it is, it does not state a location. It says?
I think it works at whatever location, whatever it takes to get it passed. I mean, I think it works at either location. I agree with the city assistant city manager. No, I don't necessarily think I need to make it specific to a given location. Let's just see how the council feels, if we can get this thing passed.
Okay. Discussion on the substitute motion. Councilman Turner? Councilwoman Akerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question now. So if we are voting for full funding without any contingencies, where is the money coming from?
I think, well, our plan would obviously not be to fully fund it. You know, I mean, our plan would still be to go out and seek those other sources of funding. So, but if that were to fail, and nobody anywhere gave us one more dollar, then we'd have to look at a couple of different scenarios. We may bond and then pay through the Tourism Reserve Fund, for instance, could then be used as a repayment source to a bond. We could look at central business tax increment financing. So we could look at some of those other models of how we would pay for that. That would be something we would come back to once. I'm not expecting that we would have zero takers on funding it, but obviously, I also have no guarantees that we would get anything.
Further discussion on the substitute motion?
You know, before we do this vote, and I know a lot of accolades and thanks will be given out, but there is a person here that's probably been pushing this in the community for well over 10 years, in addition to a lot of other veterans. But, you know, Bud Ruff is here. He has definitely been a huge advocate for this, going back before the boat went to Evansville 10 years ago. And maybe to Councilman Grab's, part of his rationale and part of his motivating speech was, I would have to agree that this more than likely will not just be a five-year commitment if we make it. I mean, I just, I don't see the boat taken off, the ship taken off, in five years. So when you look at it over a 10-year stretch optimistically, it really does minimize the stretch of time that we'll have to recover that. So, you know, very good discussion, very good motivations on all sides, and there was more than two sides on this. I think probably the most compelling argument that I heard was the message that we need to send to Evansville, and that's, you know, not that we're halfway there. I think that we have to say we want it, and then we have to go out and do the work to fund it. And, or not, and it may be or not. And you know what? We may say we want it for that cost, and we'll decide what the location is, and they may not, that's a gamble, but it's go-forward or not. And I appreciate Councilman Grab's energy, enthusiasm, and the positive outlook he has for all these things that we're working on here and how this can add to that. So, Mr. Ruff, hats off to you. If there's no further discussion, we have a substitute motion on the floor, and we'll ask everyone to cast their ballots. So I'm seeing none. Please cast your ballots. Two, three, four, five. That motion fails with five ayes and six nays. Voting aye, Mayor Artis, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Grab, Councilman Regenbach, Councilman Turner, voting no, councilpersons Jensen, Moore, Spain, Weaver, Akerson, Montalongo. So that puts us back to the original motion of Councilman Spain's. And that motion was seconded by Councilman Jensen. And we've deliberated that one pretty extensively, too, so if there's no further, Councilman Grab?
Chairman, you know, it's not the best possible motion, but I'm going to support it.
Thank you. So if there's no further discussion, please cast your, there is further discussion, Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I get my points across here before we vote and let the rest of council people know where I'd be at on this. Gosh, we've gone kind of back and forth with this here, but overall, I'm for the Festival Park location. The funding, I think, should be 100% privately funded, and that's where I'm kind of caught up on this here. I really believe, and I am very thankful for all that our veterans have done for us, but I think at the end of the day, they'd want us to do the responsible thing, and that's back to our budget. We are in a, I think, a serious financial crisis, and I think the responsible thing to do is for this thing to be funded by the private. And I can't say, as much as I want to find the funding within the city, you know, I take a look back at my district, and I can't say I'd like to give up funding for roads or any projects in my district that makes the neighborhoods better at this time. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion on the floor? Councilwoman Moore?
Could you just read, Beth, could you read back what that motion is, please? Thank you.
The original motion is to direct staff to proceed with an offer to the LST Board to locate the ship in the Festival Park area for, in an amount not to exceed $500,000, with the city's pledge to assemble the remaining financing.
Councilman Montalongo?
Mayor, if we could have a cap on the amount that the city would be in, I might, no, there's the city to pick up the remaining amount, right? Maybe I'm not understanding, because we're looking at grants.
Councilman Spain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman, the intent of my motion is to put a cap on city's participation at $500,000. The remainder, which, $1 or $1.1 million, we would need to seek through state tourism grant, private contributions, working with other units of government, and so on. And if we're not able to, that other money doesn't materialize, then we're not able to do anything more than the 500.
Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion second. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes with seven ayes and four nays. Voting no, councilmembers Moore, Weaver, Akerson, and Montalongo. And the message that we hope that Evansville receives is that we do want this boat here, and we're going to work really hard to try to close that gap, and I'm sure that Evansville is in similar situations as most municipalities in this country that are hard-pressed for those dollars. And we're trying to accomplish this and live within our means as well. Councilman Grab?
Mr. Chairman, operationally, if I could ask Chris Sette and the manager, you know, I would think the first call tomorrow would be to our colleagues at the county board. I would say the second call would be to Caterpillar, and then you guys can figure out the other calls. But those are the two players that we start with. And we have to get this ship down to the Illinois River by what date? When is this going to all evaporate, this opportunity?
By their contract with the city of Evansville, they have to make known to the city of Evansville whether they're staying or going by October 1 of this year, but they are obligated to stay there through next summer. So we have time to, you know, obviously, design and build something. So we would be looking at this. If our offer is accepted and we're able to raise the balance of the funds, it would be arriving sometime late next summer, maybe early fall.
And you're going to tell them that we have a solid council vote to?
If I've learned nothing from the last meeting, they're all watching, streaming online.
And that we're working hard to ensure that we are able to bring it here, even though the council only appropriated a half-million dollars. We're looking at our county board brothers, maybe our Fortune 25 company and others.
I will.
I just want to be sure that's correct.